Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'll have this circulated. Can I have somebody? Though I'm not Chairman of the Committee on Rules, I thought I would proffer a substitute version of the bill. And if we can just accept it for the purposes of my explaining it to everybody.
So on the motion to accept, no objections, so ordered. You may proceed, Madam Vice Speaker.
Madam Speaker, the testimony we've received over the last several days has made it clear to us that we need about $5.3 million, or at least $5.3 million, to underwrite the cost of prior year overtime and to deal with current year overtime for GPD. So this substitute version with an asterisk on the front proposes to transfer money into the SAR account. As you may know, Madam Speaker, Senator Ben created this supplemental appropriation revenue account. And the reason why I'd like to be able to use that is to be able to avoid having the situation that we had this last year. As you can, if you remember, we appropriated $600,000 to GPD for overtime. And they informed us the other day that they spent $400, but they had $228,000 remaining. I hesitate to, or at least I hesitate and I recommend, that we not appropriate directly to the departments for their overtime, that instead we transfer money into the SAR account and authorize the departments to draw down from there. So that we know where the money's at. I've also recommended in this substitute version that there be no ability to transfer money out of this for anything else. This is specifically and explicitly for the purpose of overtime and for the $600,000 for the soccer field. And the amount that's going to be transferred in will be the $1.7 million from the 2007 bond. $3.4 million will come from TAF. But Madam Speaker, I'm recommending that this be an inter-fund loan and that it may be paid or transferred back to the TAF for the unexpended balance of the two vacancy pools that we created. And before anybody goes off on this, I want to explain a couple of things. A couple of our members have made it very clear in their questioning to the department heads that if they would just hire sufficient number of people, the amount of overtime that they would need would diminish greatly. In fact, one director said he was hoping to get to zero by hiring enough people. And so if we encourage everybody to fill their vacancies, they may not need as much in this upcoming year for their vacancy pool. Though we've allocated an additional $1.5 million to GPD for 2015 overtime, hopefully if GPD follows the recommendation of a number of the members of this legislature, that they immediately fill the vacancies or increase the number of police officers, hopefully that $1.5 million that we anticipate would be necessary will not be necessary because they will have been taken care of by the vacancy pool. And at the end of the year, whatever's left in the SAR account for this and whatever's left in the two vacancy pools will be returned to TAF. I don't imagine that it'll actually make up for the $3.4, but I'm recommending that at least within the next three fiscal years that we make good on this loan that we borrowed from TAF. Some of you may want to change that, I don't know. That's just the recommendation, Madam Speaker. And so that's how I propose that we fund this 5.3 pot through a SAR account that they have the authorization to draw down from as they need it. And then, Madam Speaker, in Section 2, we've heard from testimony that GPD's going to need $2.3 million to pay back prior year overtime and will need $1.5. And so in Section 2, in Section 2A, we appropriate $100, I mean, $2,71,181 from the SAR account to pay for prior year. And in Section B of Section, Sub, small b, in Section 2, we amend Section 1 of Public Law 32-168 and we take that balance of $228,819 to pay for the prior year. So the $228,819 plus the $2,71,181 comes out to $2.3. That'll be for the prior year obligation. In Section 3, as per the testimony that was elicited by questions from the membership, from our colleagues, the Guam Police Department is going to need an additional $1.5 million. So what we did in Section 3 is we amended Public Law 32-181, wherein we appropriated $1 million, Madam Speaker, for their overtime. We appropriated in subsection B an additional $1.5 million from the SAR overtime account to make sure that as the police officers incur overtime, that they are paid within that pay period or a pay period, the next pay period. But this waiting six months, eight months is not acceptable, Madam Speaker. So I thank Senator Nicholas for being able to get that out of them, that they needed $1.5 million and that this $2.5 should be sufficient, probably more than sufficient. But they don't need to draw down the entire $1.5 if they hire enough people over the next year and actually bring down their overtime expenses. Hopefully, they got closer to their $1 million that we initially appropriated to them and will not need this $1.5 million. The Department of Corrections also was authorized to draw down from the SAR overtime account $1 million to pay for its prior year obligations in overtime. And I hope that this is going to be sufficient for them because I'm hearing from some of the men up at DOC that they're, and I want to make it very clear, that the prior year is not only 2014, it's not only 2013, it is for all prior years. So they've got to finally pay everybody who is owed money up there for overtime, their overtime, and they have this additional $1 million in this SAR overtime account to be able to do that. The judiciary testified they needed $401,000, and that's provided for in Section 5. Customs and Quarantine testified they needed $98. Okay, then, we'll just, yeah, we'll make that, somebody's going to have to make that amendment, that we go back up. I'm sorry, I, my testimony, I guess I just recalled the $98 and I forgot the additional 10%. I apologize. I hope nobody objects to that amendment when it's made, okay? And then in Section, I'll have to get back to you on Section 7, I'm trying to figure out now, I'm losing my mind. In Section 8, Madam Speaker, when there was testimony given about the bond, the 2007, I understand that there was some concern about how to be able to utilize the remaining balance there. And the amendment that's on the top of Page 5 is to make sure that as of the effective date of this act, that the Department of Education is authorized to expend the remaining funds in that 2007 bond for the purpose of replacing their air conditioners. And Section 9, there's a request and a suggestion that $600,000 be appropriated from this, from the SAR to the Guam Economic Development Authority for the Guam Football Association Gymnasium. I hope I've adequately explained. If anybody has any questions, I would appreciate, I would be more than willing to answer any questions. And again, Madam Speaker, the only reason why I thought we would create this special account in SAR is we need to be able to follow, to make sure that we don't have a repeat of this last time where we gave $600 and they only used $4 and thankfully, they didn't expend the other $200 and we can now recoup it. But in the event that we were to give it to them directly, it might not be used for the purposes that we intended. And I think if we have it in this special account, that it's very clear it's to pay down prior years and however much they need, they will be authorized up until the max that we've given them in here and that it'll be, and if there's any leftover, it'll be returned to TAF. And I thank the good sheriff from tourism for not following through on her threats to have me sent to one of our friend's businesses for taking money from her. But I tried to make it so that it was a loan and we are committed to try to making sure that we repay it within three fiscal years. We can do it probably sooner if everybody follows the vacancy pool authorizations and hires sufficient personnel so they don't need to be doing the overtime and that the SAR account will not have to be completely expended. And since it's a lockbox, whatever is left over, we can just repay back to TAF. And I see my colleague has come in and I assure him that in Section 9, the $600,000 is included. So I hope I've covered everybody's concerns. I know that there was some concern about how the vacancy pools were being utilized and how, whether or not we were getting notice. I just wanted to advise the membership that when we created the vacancy pool, we did have a provision in there that said every 30 days, they have to provide us with a list of the positions filled. And so we will know exactly how they're utilizing it and hopefully that they're using it for more GPD officers, more DOC officers, more firemen, so that we can keep the overtime down. And in the executive one, hopefully, they will be sincere enough and to hire people that are absolutely necessary, like the lifeguards that we need at DPR to be able to protect our tourists that are out there or to hire the DOA agriculture people that are necessary. And that the one anomaly that I may have run into of hiring somebody at DOL to be a phone back is just that anomaly and will not continue. I'm not happy about that, but we did make a commitment that we would support this executive pool and I'm trying to be good to my word. I just hope everybody will make sure that they hire people that are necessary to keep this government going, I mean, the function of government going, by hiring critical personnel to keep us moving forward. So that's my proposal. So anyway, if there's any questions or any amendments, I know that there should be one amendment on increasing the DOC, the Customs and Quarantine one. I apologize for that, but if somebody would, or if you want me to make it, I can make it. Just, okay, we were supposed to add an additional 10% to that $98. So $98 plus 9.8 should come, all right, just make it a simple 110. My math might not be good. So if we can amend on Section--
Page 4, line 13. Did you change the number to what? On the amendment, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much and thank you to my colleagues for all the suggestions that they made and I hope that I've covered everything.
Okay, I have Senator Duñez and Senator Nicholas and McCree, no, you're okay.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly think this is a very reasonable approach. I have two questions. In the establishment of the vacancy pool as the reimbursement to the loan, if the author would yield, there's, and this is just for the record, I guess, more than anything else, there's no, there's nothing that precludes the repayment to this account outside. In other words, the governor's, even the Governor's Transfer Authority could replenish the TAF because I know you have it structured or no, nothing going out. But coming in is not an issue with regard to reimbursement to the fund, including the Governor's Transfer Authority, if there's other monies that are realized in the general fund?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
No, I just wanted to assure TAF that there was, that we were providing for some means of repayment. If the executive finds other ways to repay it sooner, then I might be able to go back down into Tumon without feeling threatened that I took their money, so. The sooner they can be paid, the happier that I'm going to be.
That's excellent, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to make sure we weren't lockboxing that because I didn't want us to be encouraged to maybe do opposite of what the good Vice Speaker was saying and that is to hire the personnel because the more money that the vacancy pool has, the faster it gets repaid. So I'd like to try to make sure there's other funding sources as well. So it's nice to know that that's not an issue. Madam Speaker, maybe we'll take a recess for it, but I'm, without having the luxury of just looking at Public Law 32-181 being repealed, I want a further explanation unless the Vice Speaker has a full explanation of Section 7 right now.
Okay, what I'm going to do while then they are looking up that particular section, I'm going to go ahead and recognize Senator Nicholas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just going through the numbers, I'm just trying to make sure we balance. And in my initial review, it looks like it doesn't and I just want to make sure that the numbers balance out in the end. So what I'm looking at here is a transfer on supplemental appropriations of $1.7 million and $3.4 million, so that takes us to $5.1 million. Now, from that $5.1 million, we're also adding an additional $228,819 that was over-appropriated for overtime back in June. So our total should be $5.5,328,819 and that's how much we're working from. Now, when I start lessing from that amount, and I hope the members of the body can go through this with me so that, you know, in case, in case I'm looking at the wrong things, I can be corrected. But from that $5,328,819, we're lessing out $2,71,181 for 2014 overtime, night differential, hazard pay, and retirement fund contributions. Now, first of all, I do recall in our discussions, and if you just give me a moment here, I think the amount was $2.3 million for that.
Senator, when the Vice Speaker was explaining it, he used $2,71,181 plus the $2.28 that was re-appropriated here and it brings it to $2.3 million.
Okay, so that $2.28 is just, okay, so then we're going to less out that $2,71,000 and then we less out the $2.28 and that balanced out to the $2.3.
You add it together.
I added it in the beginning. It's the same, it balances. So that balances. Now, the next section here, and this is where I get a little confused is on page 3, Section 3. So from lines 11 to 16, that's basically just a restatement, but the actual appropriation is only $1.5 million that's referenced from line 17 to 21. Is that correct?
Mr. Vice Speaker, do you yield to that question? On page 3, line 18, the $1.5 million?
Okay.
We had initially given them $1 million in Public Law 32-121, I mean, 181, the budget law. We're giving them an additional $1.5.
Okay, so--
But the $1.5 is coming from the SAR account.
Yes.
The A is coming from the general fund.
Okay.
So the general fund one plus the SAR $1.5 gives them a total of $2.5 for overtime for fiscal year 15.
But this general fund $1 million here, that's original language?
That's the language that's in budget law.
Okay, so that's not an additional $1 million on top of the--
No.
So it's only the $1.5 that's actually the new number there?
Correct.
Yes.
So when we less out the $2.3 million for FY 2014, that takes us to $3,28,000 and then when we less out this $1.5 million, that takes us to, we have a remainder of about $1.1,528,819 and then I less out the $1 million from the DOC and that takes us to $528,000.
Do you want the Vice Speaker to respond to that, Senator?
Well, I'm just hoping that we can break down the numbers together because when I, in my initial breakdowns, we're not balancing. It's looking like we're short, just on a nutshell, Madam Speaker, it looks like the total numbers are actually short about $341,672.
Well, normally what we would do then, you're right, as we, you know, put these numbers in, then we need to go back and then recalculate because the, when we made the additional change for Customs and Quarantine, that full amount in the front is going to have to change all that then.
Yes.
So you're right, we need to reconcile all these numbers.
Yes, but even before that $12,000 was added, I think that we, it was already short $341,000.
Okay, so maybe the Vice Speaker--
We may need to amend upwards the actual amounts coming from whatever was in Section B on page 1.
Okay, so the Vice Speaker is going to respond, Mr. Vice Speaker?
There probably is a short, but there is a suggestion on how we deal with this. Inasmuch as we've given GPD a vacancy pool and we've already given them $1 million in 2015, if there's no objection, if we reduce the additional appropriation on line 18 from $1.5 to $1 million--
What page?
On line 18.
But what page?
Page 3.
Page 3. Okay.
Because they're going to be getting additional personnel and hopefully, they won't run up this entire amount. They don't need it in the front. They just need to know that they can withdraw an additional $1 million from the SAR overtime over, starting probably in February because the million's going to run out by February. So hopefully, that they'll have a couple of new cycles starting and if they do that, then they won't need this entire $1.5. And so if we just take this to 1 instead of $1.5, then we will be able to get closer to balancing.
So the amendment will be then on line 18?
It's a suggestion because he actually has the floor. I'm not making the amendment, but I'm just saying, if that would be acceptable, that would be a way that we can address this. This is more than we've ever given them in the past. We've given them a vacancy pool plus $2 million. Last year, we gave them $600 and no vacancy pool. And we're trying to, we're trying to do both and I think we can, we can work it out by just reducing this number.
Okay, so Senator Nicholas then with that--
Well, the thing is, is that with the vacancy pool, at least the one that I referenced in the budget, it doesn't include GPD. It includes a lot of executive branch agencies, but it doesn't include the police department. Now, I'm not sure if there's additional hiring plan. I'm sure there probably is and I'm sure it will offset. But the reason why we wanted to amend it for fiscal year 2015 up to $1.5 million was that that was what was tracking to the historical average of the overtime. If we drop that down to $1.5 million and then we go nine months into the fiscal year and then it comes up short, we're going to be, we're going to be having another situation where officers are going to be waiting for their overtime. Now, the way that this thing is, this whole bill has been structured by the Vice Speaker, I think, is a very, very excellent structure because we're using the SAR fund as a clearing account now. We're taking hard cash from the tourist attraction fund, putting it in the SAR account to be able to meet these obligations and whatever is left over goes back to the tourist attraction fund. So even if this $1.5 million is too much for 2015 in terms of overtime, if we still keep it at $1.5 million, that overage will just be reimbursed back to the tourist attraction fund. But if we're short, we're going to have to come back in here and figure out how to appropriate for the shortfall. So what I would prefer doing is adjusting the figure in Section B on page 1 to reflect whatever the shortfall is. And then if it's, again, if it's not used, then it will be reimbursed back.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, but if it is, if it is used, then, you know, it will eventually be reimbursed back.
In three years. Three fiscal years.
So what I would like to request, Madam Speaker, is can we get a hard figure on what the shortage is based on the availability and the expenditures and then increase the amounts in Section B by whatever that shortfall is, just that we can make sure the entire bill balances.
Okay, and I think maybe this might be actually a good time to kind of recess and, you know, work at these numbers. Senator, is he--
Thank you, Madam Speaker and to the retiring Speaker. I certainly appreciate the discussion. You know, I think we all acknowledge that the Chief of Police was willing to support a $1.5 million appropriation that's based on the funding source that was identified at that time. This different, this new proposal identifies $2.3 million, which is $800,000 more than what they originally requested. I understand where the good senators coming from, that if GPD is projecting a $1.5 million shortfall for this fiscal year, which even they admitted is fluid, that that amount, it's just a guesstimate based on the current tracking, but anything can change. We're putting a lot of pressure on them to hire more police officers to reduce the need to have these overtime expenses. So I submit as a possible suggestion, on page 3, line 17, we can say the sum of up to $1,500,000. So that way, what, two things would happen. Number one, only the amounts needed to cover overtime for this current fiscal year will be withdrawn from the SAR's account. And number two, this amendment will say that if only $1 million is available and GPD needs it, then it'll be $1 million. It could be $1.2 million. Remember, the way the late Speaker Ben set up the SAR's account is to identify all surpluses over the projected revenue. And as we've seen numerous times, that we have a surplus, that this government is supposedly in the black. And so I submit that the way to balance this scenario is if we just say the sum of up to $1,500,000 and leave it to the executive-- the sum of up to 1,500,000 and leave it to the executive branch to know that that's the authorization, and if there's only 1.3 million dollars available, 1.2 million dollars available, assuming GPD will need that entire amount, then we can take it from there. Otherwise, I'm not sure how much more money we can squeeze from the tourist attraction fund, and I'm also very concerned that if we give GPD 2 million, 3 million in overtime, they'll spend up to those amounts. And so, we might be enabling them to further the status quo of providing for this solution to have overtime rather than really hiring police officers, which is what this body wants GPD to do. So if that's acceptable, I can offer that as an amendment, so that we present a balanced budget bill to the governor for his action.
But before you came in, there was an amendment on page four, on line 13, to increase that amount from 98 to 110. So then that also has to be factored into the total amount. So, and that's what Senator Siniklas has been asking, and that's why I was going to call for a recess, so that then we can, you know, recalculate the numbers and reconcile all of these numbers with the total amount that will be available for appropriation.
But if in case there's no consensus to bring the 1.5 million down, or consensus to increase the monies available from the tourist attraction fund, which we're going to set up as a loan, then my proposal would be just by saying "up to."
I think the "up to" language, Madam Speaker, is very good language. I think that we should also put the same language in the section B on page one, the sum of "up to," and then, of course, adjust the figure so that it still balances, but again, it won't be drawn down unless it's actually realized. I think that that's very fair language.
Okay, we're going to take a brief recess, so that then we can really calculate these numbers, and then when we come back, we'll be able to go through each section with a specific dollar amount, okay? So we will be in a brief recess. I understand there is a change or some amendments that would be made, so Senators Nicholas, I know we left off with you, and you still then have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, in the interest of making sure that the appropriation measure is balanced, I would like to make a request that we authorize legal counsel to amend the figure on line eight to whatever amount is necessary to balance the appropriation figures throughout the remainder of the bill.
Okay, and do we have that figure, or are we going to try to, I mean, well, first of all, I think we want to make sure that the oversight chair of the TAF, you know, is in agreement as well for this increase. Senator, you don't have any objections?
Madam Chair, thank you very much, and just based on us communicating in caucus, I thought that there was going to be a proposal to have some kind of, maybe an MOA added to the provision. So make the amounts accordingly, because if I'm not mistaken, there was supposed to be, and I guess Senator Respechel's amendment was "up to," that will probably suffice, and then make the numbers run accordingly based on what we were talking about here. So I guess if we do the "up to," then the only part that will change is because we have the actual number for the pool would be 1.7, but for the section B, I think it would have to increase a couple, 100,000.
Okay, so, then, okay...
Yeah, so I guess his motion to, his motion to have legal, right, the, make the necessary amendment on sub item B to reflect the actual numbers on the breakdown, then that would, I wouldn't have an objection to that.
So, if I understand this correctly, and we want to make sure as well that the clerks and legal counsel understand, is that the changes made, the dollar amounts that are listed here on all the different sections and subsections, that that total then would actually be reflected in page one, when we need to increase then the 3.4 million dollars to actually match the total dollar amount. Is that correct? Do we understand that?
Or Madam Chair?
Yes.
If we just adopt the thinking that in, on page three, line 17, to insert the words "the sum of up to 1,500,000," we don't even need to change the 3.4 million dollars.
Oh, wow.
Because this, because everything is a projection in terms of how much overtime GPD needs for this current fiscal year. We recognize that they need 2.3 million dollars to make them whole today, and then with the SAR's account, we know that the funds in the SAR's account is not only going to come from the 2007 Series A and the TAF, which is structured as a loan. That SAR's account has been set up to be the depository for those revenues that are received outside of the revenues that were projected for the current fiscal year. So, everything that I'm doing is consistent with how we budget and the budgeting process.
Okay, so let me do this then first, is that we would need a withdrawal then of that motion that was just made between Senators Nicholas and Munia Barnes, and there's no objection to that withdrawal of that amendment?
Madam Speaker, I really need to clarify here, because, you know, if we add up, you know, if something, if the expense side adds up to 10 and the revenue side adds up to nine, we need to add plus one. And so the expenses here, if we say even if it's up to 1.5 million, we need to make sure that that amount up to 1.5 million is properly budgeted for, and the amounts are reflective in the revenue source. I understand the retiring speaker's statement that the SAR fund will receive any excess deposits that are supposed to come through there, but we've seen in prior fiscal years that the SAR fund would never get credited anything. And what we're doing here with this act is we're actually crediting the SAR's fund from the tourist attraction fund, and to assume that the difference in any shortfalls on the revenue side is going to be made up for by overages that are going to start being deposited in there. I just, it's never happened before. So, we really need to make sure the number is balanced, Madam Speaker, if we're going to adopt it. If it's going to be up to 1.5 million for our overtime for police officers in 2015, I don't want us to hope that it's going to come in, and then come July of next year, it doesn't, and we are short for 2015 in the overtime side for our officers. What we're trying to do with this whole exercise is to try not only make good on the overtime that's over 2014, but to create a situation now that really should be the norm, where none of our officers are going to have to wait anymore. And so this 1.5 million is going to make sure they don't have to wait anymore. But in order for us to make sure we cross that bridge, the revenue needs to be there. And so the amounts on section B of page one do need to be amended upwards in order to fully balance out all of the expenditures in here, not just that 1.5 million for FY 2015, but the 2.3 million for FY 2014, the 1 million for the Department of Corrections, the 400,000 for the judiciary, the 110,000 for the customs overtime, and the additional 600,000 that's been appropriated for the Guam Football Association. So, if we're going to make good on all of these obligations, we need to make sure that the funding is available. Just adding the "up to" language opens the door for that particular section to come in short, and all of these things in here, that's the one section that we shouldn't have come in short, and that's the overtime for the police officers.
Madam Speaker, in the interest of moving this discussion forward and consistent with the motion that the retiring speaker made to have legal counsel determine that amount, I'll just propose that we change on page one, line eight, just change the 3.4 million to 4 million.
I'm sorry, say that again?
So, line eight?
Yes.
Change the 3.4 million to 4 million.
To 4 million.
Yeah. It'll be an even 4 million, and that will be more than sufficient to cover all the appropriations contained in this bill. We won't have to change any appropriated amounts right now.
Okay, so...
And I got the quiet...
But I have one motion that you've made earlier, an amendment you offered on page three with the word "up to," and I know you mentioned it, but it was still in discussion.
Yeah, I'd never moved that as a motion.
So you didn't move it, okay.
And I got the quiet nudge by our acting appropriations chair.
All right, okay.
BJ Cruz.
All right, then. So, now, I know that the motion then is from 3.4 to 4 million, that's an amendment that's being offered here, but I think that Senators Nicholas still would like, from my understanding at least, and hearing what he has to say, that he wants to make sure that this, really the numbers are balanced, and I think what we need to do before...
It'll balance, ma'am, because in the interest of full disclosure, my amendment to ask for the 600,000 as a matching grant, that's what threw everything off.
Yeah, okay.
So, that's why I said 600,000 more will cover everything.
And then, don't forget also the change from the 90... And then, don't forget also the change from the 98 to 110. So.
Go ahead.
So on, on that amendment.
The balance, when, when we added all three sources of funds, there was an excess of 28,000, which is sufficient to cover the 12,000 that they were, that we've added to customs and quarantine. The difference was the 600. And if we increase the 3.4 to 4, it'll be, cover the 6.
On the amendment then, Senators Nicholas, you're, you're, you're okay? Senator Munia Barnes, you're okay? On the amendment then on page one, line eight, to increase the amount from 3.4 to 4 million, no objections? So ordered. Senators Nicholas, yes, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair. And I also wanted to touch on a conversation that I had with the, the Chair of the, of Tourism with respect to ensuring that these funds get repaid back into the tourist attraction fund. And she alluded to it earlier in her comment with respect to a memorandum of agreement, an MOA. And I wanted to inquire if it would be appropriate for us to include language in there that would have an MOA established between Imagalahin Guahan and the Guam Visitors Bureau, to have them enter into an MOA to establish a schedule of repayments to the tourist attraction fund to restore 4 million to the balance of the fund within three fiscal years. I know throughout this act, it mentions that there's mechanisms by which it can actually be repaid, but there actually is no commitment to that repayment. And if we do have an MOA, at least there'd be something there that, that would potentially be binding. And so I wanted to kind of put that out there and see what the, what my colleagues.
So you're not offering in this amendment right now?
I, I probably would, but I would like to know what my colleagues think about, about something like that, because.
I think that.
For me, the idea of, of tapping this, this fund from the tourist attraction fund and it not getting paid back, that, that's where I would cross the line to being uncomfortable with tapping into this reserve.
So, but to, to generate the discussion then, a, an amendment would have to be proffered so we can talk about it. Otherwise, it can just be ignored and you wouldn't get the feedback that you're hoping to get on that amendment. So.
Okay, so I'll proffer it as an amendment.
It doesn't hurt, of course, you know. Okay. So you're taking us to page two?
Just adding a new Section 10.
Oh, new Section 10. And it's not on page two, which is line eight to 11 that actually talks about that repayment within three fiscal years?
Section two.
Above, above Section two?
Okay, yeah, that's fine, Madam Speaker. That, that can work there.
Okay, and then the amendment, how would it read?
One second. "Imagalahin Guahan and the Guam Visitors Bureau shall enter into an, an MOA to establish a schedule of repayments to the TAF to restore 4 million to the balance of the fund within three fiscal years." Prior to the release of funds. So that MOA needs to be executed.
Okay, and, and it'd be good to get that in writing as well, so others can, so you want, I'll give you a brief recess then to write that, so others can actually see it and then they'll know. And on that amendment, the first Senator that I have on the list to speak on the amendment is Senator Yamashita. Okay, so we're going to take a brief recess. Copy of the amendment by Senators Nicholas. So, Senator, you're recognized on your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And just to read it once again, "It's Imagalahin Guahan and the Guam Visitors Bureau shall enter into a memorandum of agreement to establish a schedule of repayment to the tourist attraction fund to restore 4 million dollars to the balance of the fund within three fiscal years." And the reason why this MOA would be important, Madam Speaker, is because in this bill, we're talking about repaying the TAF over a period to extend beyond the current fiscal year. Now, we all know that in any given fiscal year, any given legislature can create budgets that would alter or change the landscape of whatever funds are available for any obligations that aren't contractually established. This MOA would be a form of a contractual requirement that regardless of what happens next fiscal year, the fiscal year after that, GBB will still be, will still have a, a form of recourse to be able to recover the 4 million dollars that they're making available today. And so this is in the interest of, of providing a form of a, a guarantee to extend beyond the current fiscal year, that the commitment of this government is to repay that amount to the tourist attraction fund, because we understand that those monies are, are important to hold in reserve in the event that the, the collections of hotel occupancy taxes were to decline and the marketing of our tourism industry were to potentially suffer and need to tap into these reserves in order for us to keep our economy sustainable. So I think that this amendment would do, would kind of close the loop on whether or not this bill would take money from the TAF and create a potential scenario where that money would fail to be repaid back. And so all we're doing now is we're saying an MOA must be established that would set a schedule of when, of, of when that 4 million is to be repaid, so that regardless of what happens in the coming years, the tourist attraction fund has a form of recourse to recover the 4 million that they're making available to cover this obligation today. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
And I, I think also before we had recess for this to be written, there was, I, I think, input provided by Senator Respechel with the language that prior to the monies being transferred that this.
I, I did not include that in this language, Madam Speaker, because I don't want there to be any kind of language that would hold up the payment to these officers. So that way the governor will have the flexibility to cut the payments immediately, but the law will still require that even though those payments have been made, they still have to establish this MOA.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I didn't see him, to ask him to, if he wanted to speak on that. So on the amendment, I have Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, so, you know, when this was first proposed, I had asked where is the money going to come from outside of the, the general obligations bond? And we talked about the tourist attraction funds, because we were told that there was four to five million unappropriated monies there. It was shared. And so then, because I, as contentious as it is, I know, I'm, the whole classified vacancies pool exists to help certain branches who have really toed the line. And, you know, hopefully, hopefully this year, some of them will be able to get some more human capital on the ground to help them out. And that's why, you know, I, I always watch out to ensure that we leave that so that those agencies can get more human resources. And so now I'm looking at this amendment. How do we know, or how do we ensure, because the, how do we ensure that this 4 million dollars shall be paid back? What if, I mean, I know, I heard the Vice Speaker, and I, we are all hoping that we'll have more police officers, safety officers, and that OT time will go down at the end of this year, so we don't need 1.5 million at the end of this fiscal year. But where would this 4 million actually come from if, let's say Parks and Recreation, we all go to the parks, and I know they've been creative and they've gotten some public-private partnerships in place, but when you talk to those men and women, they overextend themselves, whether it's a typhoon, pre-typhoon, whether it's, whatever it is. And it's not just at Ipau either, it's across the island. I mean, that's just an example. I would love to see the library be able to hire a couple of people out of this vacancy pool. Madam Speaker, my question is, how can we say that they shall get these monies, that we shall pay 4 million from the unexempted balance, the classified vacancies for executive branches, agencies, and departments cost pool account, and the public safety vacancy pool cost account? I mean, how can we definitely say that? I don't know that we can. I, I don't know that we can say that.
Who would you like to answer the question? I see the Vice Speaker already raised his hand. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I understand the concern of the, of the question. We put four, I think it's 4.6 in the public safety pool. If it's not utilized, that balance will be used to pay off this loan. Yes, we all agreed, we could put 3.6 to the executive agency pool. If it's not used, then that balance will be used to pay down this 4 million. I'm hoping that they'll fill the positions and we'll have to find some other way to repay this, but all I'm saying is that right now, we've created these two pools, and if they don't utilize it, then that'll be the first source of repayment. And we're giving the executive three years, three fiscal years within which to do this. If, at the end of this year, we're only able to pay 1 million back, then we'll have to figure out how we repay the remaining three. But I'm trying to figure out a way that right now, we assure GBB that we're going to make a good faith effort, and now with an MOA, we will, we'll make an effort, we'll be obligated to pay it back. But they will provide us with the cash upfront. It's like, it's like when we get short and we ask to borrow money from a sibling or a parent to just tide us over for a little while, but we have an agreement that it's going to be paid back. It's not a forgive it or forget it loan or a mom, bank a mom loan that's not going to be paid back. This is, this is going to be an agreement that we will pay it back, and we have three years. years within which to pay it back. If we have additional money from these two accounts, those will be the first ones, and then the balance we'll figure out after this year.
Senator Yamashita was able to answer your question?
Well, and so then, in following that line of family, right? If your sibling or your mom helps you tie over, you know, you need some money, so somebody in your family will help you out, right, for a certain amount of time? I said this off the microphone yesterday, and a couple of members reacted a certain way, but this is, knowing that this $4 million is unappropriated, perhaps unexpected monies from the tourist attraction fund, and it's going towards safety issues across our island, and judicial now, and customs, for me, I can see how all of that really does support tourism. Does it, does it not? I mean, to me, I mean, and somebody said, but you should only talk about Tumon, and I said, well, I think that tourism cuts across the island. And I suppose what I'm doing is, I'm thinking about what this, this does. I mean, it's not, tourism is not only about visitors, but tourism is also about local people. And so I'm wondering why, unless the $4 million really was budgeted for already, and unless they already had plans to expend the $4 million, then, you know, I can respect that. But if, if that really is unbudgeted, unanticipated amounts, and they already have, GVB, Mark, and Carl, and all those people already have plans for that $5 million, $4 million, I can respect that. But if, if it wasn't anticipated, and they did so great, and we had our 1.2 million visitors, and, you know, everyone did really well, then this is money that could help our whole island. I oppose that. I'm not trying to argue, and I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just saying that, you know, I oppose that as a thought. Thank you.
I think the mover of the amendment would like to respond as well to your concerns. Senator San Nicolas?
Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. You know, we need to step back and realize why we're here. All of these amounts should have been budgeted for when we passed the budget back in October, but because BBMR artificially kept the amounts low for the agencies to work with, they didn't put this in their budget request, and now they're coming to us, not even a month after the budget has become effective, saying, these are all outstanding prior year obligations. If we had included these figures in the budget, then they would have been factored into the budget. Now, what we're trying to do, since it's coming to us after the fact, is we're trying to figure out a way to make good on these obligations that are required by law, while at the same time, doing so in a manner that's not going to put undue risk on, on what our future is going forward. The cost, the cost pool that we've established in the budget to allow for hiring in these other agencies, isn't being adversely affected with this bill. What we're saying in this bill is that if there's any leftover money in that pool, it's going to go to pay back the tourist attraction fund. But what this particular amendment does is, it requires us to enter into an MOA between the governor and GVB for this to get paid back within three fiscal years. So even if the governor goes ahead and decides he wants to hire all $3 million worth of new hires this fiscal year, by next fiscal year, when he submits his budget, he's going to have to do so mindful of the fact that he's going to still have an outstanding balance owed to the tourist attraction fund. And that way, we make sure that when he submits his budget and it comes down to this legislature, we're going to look at it and say, what about that extra $4 million you owed to the tourist attraction fund? And if it's not accounted for in there, then we're going to have to actually budget for it. And the reason why it's important for us to do so at that time is because we should have done so a month ago. Now, what we've done, with the way we're constructing this to include this MOA, is we're pushing forward the budgeting of the overtime expenses that we should have budgeted for a month ago, into next fiscal year, the fiscal year after that, and the fiscal year after that. But the one reassurance we can have is that we're also including FY 2015 overtime in this bill. So, while we're going back to try and take care of 2014 now, this time next year, we're not going to have to go back and take care of 2015, because it's already taken care of here. But instead, what we're going to have to take care of is the obligation we now have to the tourist attraction fund to fully reimburse it, the $4 million that they're providing for us upfront to close out these outstanding obligations. And for the question with regards to, what do we need this $4 million for, shouldn't it go to help our people? I totally agree with that. I think that if we figure out a way to further invest this money to, for the benefit of our community, that's a really, really good thing. From my conversations with the Guam Visitors Bureau, the logic behind the reserves that they've been establishing is, just in case the economy goes south, and there's something that causes our hotel occupancy tax revenues to go down, the marketing budget of the Guam Visitors Bureau gets put at risk. And this reserve is supposed to be what they tap into in the event that hotel occupancy taxes start to drop, they still have the money to go out there and market the island. Because if there is no reserve to market the island, and hotel occupancy taxes drop, we're not only going to be suffering at that point in time when the economy is slow, but because we're unable to market ourselves to attract future tourists, we may be prolonging the suffering of our people and the downturn of our economy, because we're not able to market for future interests. So, that's why the repayment of the balance of this fund is important. We do need to have reserves, Madam, Madam Chair, throughout this government. We need reserves not only in GVB, but we had one in, in the Guam Memorial Hospital, and it's good for us to have reserves in various other critical areas in this government, so that in the event that things go south, and revenue is less available because the economy's slowing, we have money to back us up and to allow us to continue to move the island forward. So, this MOA in no way will be cutting off any other agencies from the governor being able to hire as needed based on the authority we gave him a month ago in the budget. What it does do, however, is it requires the governor and this body going forward to make sure we pay back the tourist attraction fund. Because the last thing I want is for us to, you know, say that that's the intent, but to actually not mean it. And with this amendment, we mean it. And we're going to make sure that the TAF gets paid back, the officers get their overtime, customs gets their overtime, the corrections officers get their overtime, and 2015 is covered. I think that this, this just kind of closes the loop on, on the total effort that we're trying to make here to be able to get the money now to pay what we should have budgeted for a month ago, but also to pay back that money that we're getting now, so we're not fully exposing this island to any, any downturns and any future risk. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Senator Uggan, you canceled? Okay, Senator Morrison? Morrison, Senator? I mean, yes, you raise your hands, right? And then McCready?
On the amendment.
Oh, okay, on the main, okay, on the amendment. No, the amendment. Oh, okay, no. All right, so, on the amendment, Senator, no, okay, so, on the amendment, are there any objections to the amendment? They're being non-sordid. So, we're back now to the main motion. So, I have Morrison, McCready, and Morrison. Morrison's fine, okay. And Senator Tomada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wanted to thank the vice speaker for his efforts in putting this together. I just want to go back also and pointing to some of the discussions I had, and I want to ensure that that's something that we continue to keep alive as far as discussions. I, I know there were some comments about, we shouldn't look into some of these fee structures that are building these, built into these agencies to support some of the operational or administrative cost. And I go back, Speaker, you've also mentioned some of the, this fees that you mentioned with customs, and that's a prime example that, that I was referring to, that some of these fees that mainly augment their, a good percentage of their budget to factor in overtime, directly, indirectly, I mean, but it is, it is a factor in how they run their operation, how they manage their policies with the collection of their fees to include Many years, I, working closely with Senator Jim and Spadone, and Senator Ada overseeing the contractors licensing board, there was a push by many of the contractors on Guam to, to, to get investigators more out into the community, get investigators out on the weekends, extend their hours, you know, all this request to, to crack down on the underground economy, crack down on the underground illegal contracting activity out there. And there was no way to do that by pooling appropriations from other areas or funding sources. The only way we could have done that is get the support of the stakeholders, the contractors in this case, and, and to make an adjustment into those fee schedules. So, you know, that's clearly a success of what I was referring to, when we, we have these discussions with these agencies, is that there's examples out there where we have adjusted fee schedules that attach these overtime costs to it. And now you can see there, there, in some of these agencies that had some of those structures in place, they were able to use these fees that they generate to cover those costs and have contractors out there on the weekends and extended hours. So, I hope to keep this discussion alive. I hope, some of the comments that were referred to, that we shouldn't go in and look at those. Well, you know, we still have to be a solution-oriented body and not have this, this cycle of overtime coming down, this path every single year. And there has to be some mechanism that is already built within these agencies. And again, I refer to the, these fee structures, that, again, FIRE actually was open to it. I think we need to really look at that, these options or these, as solutions to addressing and minimizing the impact of overtime. I certainly don't want to, you know, I think many sessions ago, a colleague mentioned that we should start transitioning to performance-based budgeting. But it, this clearly goes counter to that statement, as we now seeing an agency that went out and done well for themselves and had a surplus. And now, now we're, we're not rewarding them for the outcomes or the measurements of, or meeting their mission and going far beyond, and now we are redirecting something they worked very hard to accomplish into a fund that will address, of course, a need that we need to take care of today. But this is, this is, the goal, Madam Speaker, is, of all of us, is to find solutions within these agencies. And as done in the past, I've sat in these chairs, and as managers, we've all got to look within and see what policies that can we put in place that would address these types of, of issues. We don't certainly want our, these managers to think that we don't encourage them to look at their structures, or fee structures, or whatever mechanisms they have to address There is a lot of examples out there. I mean, I like the fact that FIRE has, is encouraged by the statements that was made to, that they would like to review that and see where they can look at to see where they could minimize the impact of overtime. Prime example, Madam Speaker, there is, there's a lot of services for, like FIRE and police that go out there, and they, they are normally, normally on standby at festivals, at games, baseball games, football games. Those are situations where they're anticipating potential issues that may require medical attention or issues of public safety, but not necessarily a call to 911 that pulls an officer to stay behind, along, behind hours accumulating overtime. And those are the types of events or festivals out there that do have, my understanding, fees attached to it, where they, they are requested to be, provide their services at these festivals or events. And that's where I'm trying to get at, is where these managers or directors or heads of agencies have to look at those fees for services for these types of events to build in whatever costs associated that might be to address that service. So, I just wanted to keep this discussion alive, Madam Speaker, because I intend to, to work with these agencies, these managers that are, that want to look within their department versus come down there every time and throw this on, throw this to us to figure it out. So, I hope we keep this discussion going as far as looking within their departments to address overtime. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. On the main motions, Senator McCready?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the retiring speaker. And I also want to recognize Senator Yamashita for what she considered as, as public safety being an entire, not just tourism problem, but an entire island that we need to support and we need to keep safe as well as our tourists. You know, this overtime wasn't just brought to the attention of this body because the police department is short-staffed and undermanned. We are trying to do everything we can as a body to make sure that this island is safe. But if you just go down the line of law enforcement personnel, and when we talk about numbers, we only have about 302, but when you talk about the crime, and this is a 2013 crime report, arrests in trends, we had nine murders, 84 reported rapes, 100 reported robberies, 289 reported aggravated assaults, 1,075 burglaries, 1,242 larceny thefts, and 243 motor vehicle We also had four arsonists. And you can just go down the line, other assaults, 1,104. You're looking at a total of 3,306 reported alleged offenses. 1,918 of them were, were charged. These men and women, these men and women on the streets are working very hard to keep this community safe. And we do have a man shortage problem. And I think, when I woke up this morning and, and the texts were going off, the texts have been going off all week, the phone calls, we're trying to do the best we can with the resources that we have. But so are these men and women in uniform. But from my standpoint, it is about time that we focus, and, and the texts I got this morning was, this is the most support that we've been getting in a while. And my answer was, it's about time. It's about time that we focus our resources and prioritize public safety for our island, our family, our communities. It's about time. No disrespect to anyone else, anyone in this body. I actually commend everybody in this body. But it is about time that we focus on what's right in our community, and that's safety. It's very important that we also focus on the people that protect and watch over us, and that's our men and women in uniform. And before today, we really didn't do anything to get closer to paying out that overtime with our prior year obligations. All we did was argue. We didn't get any closer. But as you see today, cooler heads prevailed. Compromise was achieved, and the most important thing I think that happened was we used common Department of Corrections, 280% overcrowded. Piecemeal facility, trying their best to get out of that federal receiver, federal settlement agreement that's going on 25 years. But the people and the employees of that department go to work every day to protect the people outside those gates. They're not perfect. Nobody is. We know that, but they give perfect effort, and you have to commend them for that. And they deserve every red cent that they work for. Customs in quarantine, $15 million in methamphetamine seized just last year alone, 19,000, over 19,000 grams total. That's what's ruining this island. They work for every red cent, and they deserve it. And the list goes on, with all the other law enforcement. goes on with all the other law enforcement agencies, including judicial and whoever else works to keep this island safe. I don't think we will ever be able to realize that this island will never have crime. But we can make a very big dent in how we approach it and how tough we are and how supportive we are of our public safety officers and our law enforcement departments. So, I thank the body, all the legislative members here, and I thank the, the members of law enforcement for being extremely patient in getting their money. And I think by looking at these things, we are very close to what I think we're passing a responsible piece of legislation. That costs money. It's not free. But neither are there time when they're working while we're sleeping and they're taking care of us. So, I'd like to thank you, Madam Chair, and everyone in this body. And I hope that we can all agree that this is something that needs to be done. And it needs to be done now. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator McCready. I understand on the main motion, we have Senator Tom Adda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, first of all, I'm very encouraged and heartened by the, what my colleague has just expressed here and that he's emphatically expressing his support for the bill. And I'm sure that he'll be there in case this bill gets vetoed. He'll be there to support the override of that veto. I certainly am encouraged by all that. But I would like to just make one slight amendment to the bill. And the amendment has been circulated. And on page five, lines three to five, I think maybe the way it reads right now is that the superintendent of education is authorized to expend the remaining funds for general CIP. And then, a bunch of examples are provided. And I think it's inconsistent when we say CIPs, we're normally talking about improvements that are over normally a value of $10,000 or really a major construction. Whereas, the examples given were something really more in the order of just general repairs and replacement. So, the amendment that I've given would propose to read, "Education is authorized to expend the remaining funds for facilities repair and equipment repair and replacement for public schools," and strike out the term "general CIP."
Thank you, Senator Adda. I do have someone wishing to speak, but on, on that amendment, Senator Adda, did you also want to take up the apprentices on line four? I have an open. Well, you don't have a close parentheses there either, right?
Oh, well, remove the parentheses so that then it just reads that the remaining funds can be used for facilities repair and equipment repair and replacement for public schools. Period.
Thank you, Senator Adda. Speaker Wapat, you're recognized on his amendment.
Thank you very much. I understand, of course, where the senator is coming with this amendment. The only reason why I kept the general CIP there because that was what the bonds had gone out for, and that's how they listed it. And when I called GITA because we wanted to confirm the amount, then they were saying that the trustee would only release the monies when they follow exactly what the original bonds had gone out for, but only through the legislature, of course, we could change it. Now, the reason for the examples that I've given there in particular, and I've, I've not, I don't have a complete disagreement with the, with the amendment. However, we need to be able, though, to still put in the purchase of air conditioners, the split units, because right now, they have gone in and they have changed out almost all of the units with the exception of about 300 air conditioners. And there are about, about maybe, and close to about 800 that were replaced in 2012. So, there's going to be a need to purchase and replace some of the, you know, parts that they, that they're going to need for these older machines, air conditioning machines. So, I don't want it to be just where it is facility repair and, yes, equipment repair, I understand that. But it's important to put down air conditioning replacements because, like I said, there are 300 of those that are now in need of replacements. And, I mean, because, but leave it open enough for, yes, for any other type of major repairs and other smaller equipment replacement that they're not basically capital improvement projects. So, that part, you know, it's okay. So, if the mover of this amendment then, it's amenable to really make sure that we do insert air conditioning, though, replacements, those air condition, the split unit air conditioners that need to be replaced and, and of course, parts, you know, for those machines.
So, again, Madam Speaker, on line four, you would, after facilities?
So, it'd be facilities repair and, and equipment repair. Then, where it says "and," I would like to say, air conditioning replacements. So, it just add the air conditioning before the replacements, yes, for public schools.
On that, on that amendment to the main amendment, Senator Adda, you're recognized.
Well, I think maybe we can address that concern because really, equipment is a broader term, which could include tables, air conditioners, you know, drinking, fountains, or whatever. So, equipment really is a broad enough term that would include air conditioners. I think maybe by changing the word "equipment repair and replacement," maybe if we said "equipment repair" or "equipment replacement" for public schools, maybe that might address her concern.
Okay. No, I, it really does not. And, and the reason why I say that, because I just had a conversation yesterday with the superintendent telling and maintenance. And the concern is that there's always, always a need for a lot of other equipment to be replaced. And one of the priority here are the air conditioners, the 300 air conditioners. And I want to make sure that that's, you know, addressed first. Then, they can use the leftover monies for any other equipment, but specifically, air conditioning. Those 300 that we want to do because that also falls in that every child is entitled to an adequate education because there's no air conditioner in the classroom, a broken-down air conditioner, then that's already a violation. And, but however, if it's, you know, other types of equipment, like even, yes, granted, water fountains are too, but there's, we have more than sufficient water fountains in because you have so many per child. But air conditioning in the classroom is critical.
So, I guess the concern then can be addressed by just adding another phrase, "equipment repair and replacement," and "air conditioning replacement."
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, Senator Tom, I'm going to ask you to read it again because you have some sections on line four and five that should have been deleted based on your amendment precedent. So, if you can just read it for the record so I have a better understanding.
Okay. So, the new language would be starting on line three.
Three.
It would read, "Education is authorized to expend the remaining funds for facilities repair, comma, equipment repair and replacement, comma, and air conditioning equipment replacement."
For public schools. Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
And so, just to clarify, because I understand totally what Madam Speaker is talking about. In the world of DOE, things are DOE. And so,
Okay. So, if it's not state.
What we want to do is, you know, facilities and repair, comma, equipment repair and replacement, comma, and air conditioning repair and replacement. Because some of the air cons don't need to be replaced. They just need to be repaired. Thank you.
So, you're adding the word "and air conditioning" or repair replacement? Or replacement. So, on Senator Yamashita's amendment to the amendment to Tom Addus, are there any objections? No objections. Motion carries. We're now on Tom Addus' amendment as amended. Anybody else wishing to speak? Senator S. Nicholas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And just at the risk of jumping into the whole equipment, air conditioning situation, I, from what I understand, the intent is to prioritize air conditioning as a repair item. So, if we could amend the amendment as amended.
Okay. Why don't we just take care of Senator Addus, if you're not, and then you can add yours, or?
Sure.
Yeah. Well, go ahead and, thank you, Senator S. Nicholas. On Senator Tom Addus' amendment, are there any objections? No objections. Motion carries. Senator Adda, Tom, can you please be sure that the clerks have the actual amendment? And so, Senator S. Nicholas, I'll recognize you now on the main motion, if you want to do an amendment now to that, to that section.
Okay. Yes, Madam Chair. And I know, I know that, you know, by observation, it can appear tedious, but the intent is to prioritize air conditioning. And I don't believe that the original mover of the amendment was in any way trying to deprioritize. He just wants to have equipment taken care of as a, in general. And the mover of the amendment to the amendment wanted to prioritize air conditioning. So, in that vein, I would like to proffer an amendment to the recently amended language. Is legal counsel present? Okay. I just, for simplicity's sake, as a technical amendment perhaps, to just have legal counsel amend that section so that the language would prioritize air conditioning repair or replacement.
Education is authorized to expend the remaining funds for facility repair and equipment replacement. So, we're going to take air conditioning or repair replacement and put it right after facilities?
If I could just ask the legal counsel, Madam Chair, to make the necessary language adjustment so that that section
So, on that motion?
Would just prioritize air conditioning repair.
Air conditioning. On that motion, no objection. Motion carries. Thank you. Anybody else on the main motion? If not, I'm going to ask the vice speaker. Vice Speaker, would you like to close on the main bill?
Thank you very much. Madam Chairman, first, I'd like to thank all the members for being patient, four days of hearings. But more importantly, I really would like to thank all those men and women involved in public safety who have had to endure months, if not years, of non-payment of their overtime, or as was done in the judiciary, a force comp time. I want to thank them for, for working as hard as they all do. And I, without going through the stats that were mentioned by a member earlier, they have worked very, very hard and are deserving of the amount of money that we're providing to them. I do want to take exception, Madam Chair, to a statement that we have not tried to address this. Since I first came to this legislature 10 years ago, I have been asking directors to please tell us how much they actually need because them not coming clean with us does, just does not do their department well. And I was glad when we finally had the chief of police the other day, he reminded me that we had tried in June to try to provide them the $2 million that they needed. At that point, we were told Adalit would, would take care of them. We then found out the other day that he's been asking since April for money, both he and his ASO. And they've not received an additional penny on top of what was originally appropriated to them. So, it was and is incumbent upon this legislature to appropriate that amount and not leave it to the discretion of the executive because it isn't being addressed. But we have been trying, Madam Chairman, to address the needs of overtime for all of these people. And I even attempted to try to address the issue of the stipends. I mean, I'm embarrassed to, to finally find out that these reserve officers that are out there only get $250. That's shocking. And to be behind for July is unconscionable when they're only getting $250 a month and to not have paid them for four months. So, we're trying, and I want to thank my colleagues for working with, with the committee to try to address this. But we have been trying as a body, and I want to commend everybody in here because we have. Senator Nicholas, at the, at the GPD oversight hearing, a budget hearing, I think six times asked, how much was, do you need? And I did too. We, we're trying, you know? And so, even DOC. And so, now, we're finally taking care of it. We're finally going to be square with all of the employees and hopefully with the pool that we've established that we'll be able to take care of future needs. But I really just wanted to make it clear on the record that this legislature and this body has been making every effort possible to make sure that we've taken care of their overtime. And so, I'm hoping that with the way that we've structured this, and as I said, Madam Chairman, the SAR account was to be able, to be able to track this. There's not going to be transferring out, and they'll only be able to deduct any amounts that they need as, as, as they, as they can justify it. So, I think we've provided all the protections. I thank you for your understanding and allowing for the TAF fund to be tapped. And I'm glad that you and Senator Nicholas have worked out an arrangement where an MOA is going to be required before any money is, is provided to make sure that we pay, pay this back within three fiscal years. And so, I think we've tried to take care of everybody's needs. I think we've done a reasonable, reasonably good job, Madam Chairman. And I'm hoping that the members will all vote for this. I'm hoping that the, that the executive will approve it, and there'll be no need for us to come back to try to override it because we've tried to address everything. And so, I'm hoping that we have sufficient votes to show that this legislature is in full support of this without any. So, thank you, Madam. I'm completely expended, so.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. And I know that this was your closing, but the speaker keeps looking at, she, I'll go ahead and allow her the opportunity to say a few words, a few.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And, you know, and I know that the vice speaker has been really very gracious, of course, to, you know, give credit to, to everyone. And granted, that should be the case. And, you know, I want to thank you as well. I know how a vanguard you are when it comes, you know, to the TAF funds. And I know how you are as well in wanting to assist in anything that involves really, you know, the culture, our language, you know, that will continue to promote the island. I'd like to as well recognize, if I may, Senator S. Nicholas, who's always been able to recognize, if I may, Senator San Nicholas, who's always been able to, and very gracious in terms of always working with the vice speaker, with the numbers, of course, and really, at the time when we all started out, we just all thought that these were just two funding sources, go with the bill as is, don't make any, you know, kinds of amendments to the bill. But as we proceeded, we found then that there were other departments and agencies who started to come out of the woodwork, you know, hearing that major departments and agencies with law enforcement officers, that since they were going to get it, that then there were those who have been kind of set to the side, to fend for themselves. And I don't think there's anyone in this legislature who honestly feels that they do not want to address this and take care of our men and women who are in law enforcement one way or the other, that we want to make them whole, and we want to bring them current, and that I know this legislature has done. So, when we first came in, we had the police department, we had the fire department, and, you know, we had the Department of Corrections, but now that has been expanded beyond that. So, it's, the one thing that I love about the process, of course, is that when we bring in the individuals with the numbers, and then, you know, we continue to flush out more and more of what really is needed, and then the creativeness of, you know, the members to be able to come up with a, I think, a win-win. I know it's going to hurt TAF, because I too got a phone call this morning, concerned about, you know, the monies, the amount that's been taken out of the TAF, but the MOU and the borrowing and the eventual transfer in definitely makes it more palatable. I think what also this done that does is that then, of course, they believe that in order for us to have any tracking, because the legislature needs to see this, we need to know how monies are being tracked, so that then, you know, we can plan, do better planning in the future with, you know, whatever little resources that we have, really stretching the dollar. And so, what better place than to fully then utilize the SAR fund, and then be able to have, of course, the executive branch make that payment. And I think three years is reasonable, three fiscal years, and if it's not, if you can't do it in the first year, then there's the second, and then there's the third, always making sure that there's some flexibility, not really tying the hands of the executive branch. And then, you know, there's the opportunity as well to bring in our other brother, the third branch in the judiciary, to make, again, their people whole by addressing their terms. And lastly, because this is an appropriations bill, it stands, to recently makes sense as well, that then we will be able to address, since we were addressing the 2007 Series A bonds, in which also the Department of Education is a part of that borrowing authority, that then now we're able to provide for them, because as you know, we, as much as we wanted to give a lot more to DOE, there's always that, you know, limitation. And my understanding is that they just, what, when they were dividing up the funds, the maintenance division got only like $19,000 to use for some small, you know, I mean, a small amount to buy small, you know, replacement of parts and tools that they're going to need. And lastly, of course, again, because coming from the same funding source, and I know you've been an avid supporter of sports tourism, and I think in this case, you're going to see the tourism money really go a long way in helping, of course, you know, the development of these gymnasium and classroom sports facilities, you know, for our children. And you know you're a part of that group, that we brought out some 500 children from, you know, the Philippines to come here and compete with our children, and that was something that, you know, we've been wanting to do, and we've seen it happen. It's slow, but it's happening. And even though our kids are not going to go to Japan to participate in that competition in the Far East, we'll bring them to Guam to play with our children. So, I thank you very much, Madam Chair. I thank you, Senator San Nicholas, and especially our vice speaker, who's always, again, always, you know, trying to find, you know, a way in which then all of our colleagues will be supportive, and to the point where we really would not need to have or attempt an override, because we would like to get everyone on board. And so, thank you again very much.
Thank you, Speaker Wampat. With that being said, I'm going to recognize the Mad... We're going to go, I'm going to go ahead and recognize the majority leader at this time. Senator Respechel, please, to rise.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, in addition to what's been said by our speaker and the previous speakers, I move that we rise from this committee of the whole, and to make sure that the words are inserted as amended in the committee of the whole, Bill Number 415-32 LS has amended in the committee of the whole, that we rise from the committee of the whole with the recommendations made, with all the amendments made while in the committee of the whole remain intact, with the recommendation that this bill pass by this legislature. And so, at this point, I move that we rise.
On that motion, without any objection, motion carries. We're going to go ahead and take recess at this time?
Madam Speaker, I'm very proud to report that Bill 415 has been reported out of the committee with a recommendation to do pass. Everyone's received a copy of it in gross, and we're ready to go to the voting file.
So, we are, okay, so on that motion, then, without any objections, so ordered, we are now on the voting file, so I'm going to ask the clerks to please read Bill Number 415-32 LS.
Bill Number 415-32 LS, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land, and amended in the committee of the whole, introduced by Committee on Rules, Federal, Foreign and Micro-Nation Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, and Election Reform by request of the Magalang in Guam, the governor of Guam, in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam. An act to appropriate funds from the supplemental appropriations revenue, SAR, fund, for the payment of government of Guam employee and law enforcement personnel unpaid overtime costs and for other purposes.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Addus?
Aye.
Senator Tom Addus, aye. Senator Tony Addus? Senator Tony Addus, aye. Senator Uggan?
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas?
Aye.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Lim Tiako?
Aye.
Senator Lim Tiako, aye. Senator McCready?
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison?
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes? Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Respechel? Senator Respechel, aye. Senator Rodriguez? Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator San Nicholas?
Yes.
Senator San Nicholas, aye. Speaker Wampat?
Uggan.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita? Senator Yamashita, aye.
Bill Number 415-32 LS received 14 ye votes. Bill Number 415-32 LS is duly passed by this body. Mr. Majority Leader, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we adjourn subject to the call of the speaker.
On the motion, we are adjourned subject to the call of the speaker, and objections are ordered.
Good job.